Hello, this is a special teleconference of the ASCA Board of Directors to discuss the DNA program and the possibilities of other labs besides Theryon. The way that we're going to do this is that we're going to have some guests. David Clayton, Ray Fayer, and Peter Harold Mastor here with us, who will, you know, give us their take on this issue. And then after each one, I'm going to go around and let the directors make comments or ask questions if they have any. And then we'll go on to discuss what our direction is going to be. So today here, we are all present. David, Ray, Peter, Cindy, Denise, Jean, Judy, Ken, Linda, Rachel, Rick, and myself, Liz. So let's start with David. David Clayton, please, if you want to add anything.
Just something brief. First, thank you to the board for inviting me to be part of this. When I was on the board previously, we had discussed some of these things. As far as the first section on Ferogen and some of that information, it was first Jerry Offox was the president when some of this was originally going on. And then the next iteration was when Pete was president. And we had gone over pretty much all of this with Theryon at the time. And I had looked at other pedigrees or the DNA markers and the samples on different dogs and how they were modified. So I saw a fair number of dogs that were adjusted after the fact. So the dogs were given a certain DNA profile. And then based on their offspring, their profile was altered at a later date. So that was, it's listed in some of the points that I had listed. But we actually looked at, oh gosh, about 20 dogs that had had things changed after the fact based on their offspring. So anyway, so mostly, you know, all of this was gone over the last time when I was on the board. And then they just kind of moved forward, chose not to act at that time. And it's, you know, been the DNA program that ASCA has now.
Are you done, David? Just to make it sure.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to go around and see if anybody has any questions. So let's, let's start with Cindy.
Not at this time.
Denise?
No, I don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Jean?
Okay.
Judy?
Not right now.
Ken?
Yes, David, hi. Hey, I have two questions I'd like to ask. One thing, one thing that I never, I did not see, and it just came up in a conversation I had. We have Certogen already actively testing for us. What would be the possibility, say, of compared, compared to the other labs that we've already done the comparison? What about having Certogen be a stopgap while we're waiting for technology, for ISAG to come up with those, accepting new markers for the SNP type testing? Have Certogen just do our testing until that's solid? Then we can migrate to labs that can do that for us in a less painful manner. How would that? I like what you did on your evaluation of the proposals. And I pretty much concur with your recommendation. But I was wondering, we may have missed an opportunity here. What do you think of that?
I'm not super, I know Certogen a little bit. Miriam was here on Friday. And so I did talk to her a little bit about Certogen because I wasn't familiar with them. I know they did the European testing. But it's still going to be kind of the same thing. You're shifting markers one way or another. So you can either do that with Certogen or other companies. You know, with the SNAP testing, it probably is good to see if there are going to have universal markers so we don't run into the same problem we did or we have with STR markers. If you can use something that's more universal, then you wouldn't have problems later on with transfer. I don't know how many markers Certogen uses. What seems to be happening with the STR markers from, I did a couple lit reviews and looked at kind of testing over time. And, you know, the STR testing is shifting more towards like animal bites and things like that so they can exclude dogs and more things that are used for forensic science rather than direct testing. So the biggest thing is making sure that you have enough markers so that you can actually accurately identify the dogs. And, you know, when we first started this, everybody thought, well, nine, nine markers would be enough. And then we thought, well, 12 or 15. And then it turned out at that time UC Davis was using 18. And now the number of markers for a level of confidence is up to 33. So you at least have to have, you know, I guess my question with Certogen would be is, how are they doing with dogs that are closely related relatives? If they haven't had any problems with that, then that might be another opportunity for ASCA. I wouldn't exclude them. I just don't know enough about them to make any kind of, you know, I don't have enough information on them to be able to compare it. UC Davis with 33 STR markers seems to be a good idea. And they also work with Certogen already. So, you know, it might be fine.
Okay. I, I was just thinking whether or not it would be feasible to quickly try and get that information because I think the transition could be less painful if we just continue to use a lab that's already using our database, has access to everything while we're waiting for the SNAP. It's SNAP, not SNP, is that correct? The SNAP markers?
SNP. Yeah.
SNP, yeah, okay. The SNP is to be accepted by ISAG so that we don't have to make any more transitions where people may have to pay for additional testing. Okay.
I think you're probably going to have to do some back.
I was trying to wonder whether or not you would endorse the fact that perhaps we should check with Certogen before we make any final decision.
I don't think that's a bad idea. I think that would just provide more information for the board.
Right, okay. Thank you. My second question was, since you're on the board and since a lot of these problems with this report are first coming to light, things that I never even knew had existed, having been involved when we first started using Imgen to do DNA testing, the fact that ISAG couldn't settle on what kind of markers they would want to, that basically the industry was working on their own. What, can you fill in the gaps on how we chose? And it seems to me that this thing about adjusting people, the scientific results of a DNA test, adjusting it because we had lapses of information. How, how does that fit as some kind of a scientific process? Or is that just some kind of a bit of guesswork? What have we done to a DNA program by doing this?
Well, you know, originally, when the problems arose and the 3,500 samples were lost, there was a choice at some point to go back and re-sample. And I don't know, I'm sure it was the company that probably said, well, we can get around this if we test enough of the offspring. You're always going to introduce some kind of error rate anytime you do that. And basically what they were doing, if you have like hundreds and hundreds of samples, you can probably get pretty close. But, you know, litters aren't hundreds of samples. You might have, you know, eight or 10 in a litter and a bitch might have three or four litters. So you're dealing with, you know, maybe 40 puppies, maybe 50 puppies. And that's just not enough to come up with an accurate solution. So what they were doing was looking at the offspring's DNA markers. And some of these markers weren't found in either parent. They were trying to fix things. So they kind of went backwards and said, well, you know, these have this and this have, you know, these have the different marker sets. And we've seen enough of these and the different relatives that we believe it's accurate. But then they kind of went back and figured out the DNA of the parents. That's when they adjusted the DNA profiles on, not most dogs, but troubled lines. And that worked to a certain extent, but it introduced an error rate. And that error rate has kind of gone down the line some. It didn't fix things. It just, it kind of constantly had to readjust and readjust. So it's not a perfect system. So by not going back originally and, and saying, gee, we have some, you know, we have a mess here, we should fix it and go back and use the original dogs, they did some guesswork on what things they believed to be accurate. And it introduced some error rates and some really closely related lines.
So being on the board, and Linda can back me up on this. Where our original intent was, in accepting a DNA-based registry, we were trying to scientifically establish an accuracy and a verification, yeah, a verification, a rate where we would absolutely be able to say that the veracity of our registry is quite high. Subsequent boards, and in that idea, by introducing this guesswork concept because we ended up with a problem that, and I am not, I am totally unaware of what happened to Imgen. It's, it sounds very bizarre story. So something horrible happened. And our, we, our DNA program right now, the results of our DNA program, is it unfair for me to say that it's not based on any kind of scientific principle? But if we've made it work by doing some pretty fancy guesswork?
I think it probably works for a lot of the lines. But there's some lines that had some initial problems with guesswork in it. And that, those lines, it's not as accurate for. There, you know, I don't know overall what percentage of the lines it doesn't work for. But it works for a certain amount of the lines. And then there are just some lines that it does have some problems with. I don't have, I tried to get the data from Theryon and I couldn't get it. I asked.
Is there any explanation why there would be this experience that certain bloodlines, certain breeding programs would be producing, would be having difficulty with this? And it's not the same experience throughout the total population of dogs being registered?
I think some of it had to do with the chain of command. There was not, you know, when Imgen got the, the original stuff, the original DNA, a lot of it was blood cards or buccal samples. And so you had 3,500 samples lost. And some lines were heavily retested. Like Twin Oaks was heavily retested. They originally had some issues. And then Twin Oaks resolved all their issues. Whereas some of the other dogs, it just didn't work out as well for them. And I don't know, you know, there's a lot of gaps as far as, I can make some guestimates as what happened, but I have no idea. The biggest thing I think is there was just a very poor chain of command as to, you know, the DNA samples themselves. There wasn't a lot of quality assurance.
Right.
So it just so happened that it fell out the way it fell out.
We had discussed that in the beginning, that that could be problematic. And apparently, those of us who wanted a more, a more controlled system of submitting samples, possibly our argument should have been heated at the time. But we, we won't know. Oh.
No, I have no idea.
Well, it is what it is.
I know Imgen, you know, Imgen had some issues with, like, there was only one or two people doing it at the time. And then later, there was a relative that started doing some of the work and maybe not the scientific background of some other people, so.
Yeah.
We won't know.
Something bad happened and we don't know. So basically, is it fair to say that we're basically starting all over again?
No, I don't think so. Because I think for the majority of the dogs, it works out well. And whether you transfer it, you know, to someone else or whatever, or whenever you transfer it, the dogs that still are, are not having problem lines shouldn't have any problems with the different marker set. Maybe some maybe you have to retest some. That's what all of the different companies and UC Davis kind of say there should be some retesting, particularly if you go to the SNAP testing. But even with STR, you know, they'll have some that they have to retest, but it shouldn't be the majority of the population.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, David.
Sure.
Okay, I'll continue to go around. Let's see, Linda?
Do you want to know what happened with Imgen?
Well, I'm sure everybody would like to.
I would like to know.
Well, okay. They were basically a cattle company, herford, no, not a herford, the milk cows. Holstein. And they, the Holstein registry upped their ante as to who had to be tested and who didn't. So Imgen got an influx of Holstein samples and put us on the back burner. And we were like six months behind and it was taking six months to get samples back. So we called them into a spring meeting and they said, oh, yep, sure. We'll, we'll, we'll fix that and we'll get you back online and get everything all set and straight. And they didn't. So Jerry, Lola, and I had a conversation with Eric because Dr. Caldwell had died. And his wife took over, who was the office manager, who really didn't know anything about genetics, took over. And their two sons were up there, Eric and Lester. And Lester was more or less running the business. So during the conversation, Jerry brought up the fact that they said that they would catch us up, take less time to get samples and so on and so forth, and they never did. So Lester Caldwell said that, well, we're not going to put our bread and butter on the line for you. And that's when we decided we needed a new lab. And as far as what Imgen did when they took over, I would suggest you talk to Theryon as to why they did what they did. Otherwise, it's all his thing. And pedigrees may have been, and I have no idea if they are, the numbers change or whatever, that was back 15 years ago and everything that time forward should be fine. If they're wrong, they're wrong 15 years ago. Not today.
Okay, that is Linda?
I have a question for Linda. This is Rachel.
Okay, hold on, Rachel, because you're next anyways, hold on. Are you done, Linda?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Rachel.
Linda, so when we spoke with Will at 2005 at the Georgia Nationals, when he did his presentation to the membership, we specifically asked him, and I was standing there, so I heard it, so this is not hearsay. We asked him how they would test closely bred dogs, lime-bred dogs. And he said, no one told me that there were lime-bred dogs in ASCA. That was his exact words. And we said, well, there's actually a lot of lime-bred dogs in ASCA. And how many markers would it take to test those dogs? He said, it would take at least 28 to determine parentage on lime-bred, closely bred dogs. Because I was, I personally was planning a litter and did not want to breed the two sires to the female because they were all related if he could not definitively tell me that he could produce parentage. And he said he could not. So I did not do that breeding because I didn't want to lose my registry with ASCA. So that's not hearsay, folks. I was there, I heard the conversation, I heard the question, and I heard his answers. So.
And I want, and I want to hear it from him.
I heard it from, we asked him, we, I've asked him on the board when we had him on the phone and he confirmed that. And he also confirmed that they rounded markers. And I asked specifically, did you document which dogs were rounded? And he said, no. And I told him, as well as I told the board, then what that means is you have a corrupt registry because you did not document properly, basically, your procedures that you use to determine those markers. So that's all I have to say about that. I do have a question for David.
Am I allowed?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I would suggest you, you put that down in writing, send it to Will for verification so the rest of the board can know it's fact.
We can definitely do that. It's been done before. I think I can probably go back and pull those records. But we can definitely do it again.
Cool.
I think this is, this is Liz. Hold on, Rachel, for just a second, and then I'll give it back to you. I think that, you know, after this discussion, we'll probably have some questions and that we will want to send to Theryon. I mean, I was expecting that even before I heard any of this. So because they, they, they need to, you know, have the opportunity to reply and answer. So I'm assuming that we will do that soon. So just, I'll, I'll, I'll track. And if anybody has specific questions, just write them down so that we can have a list and then put it together and send it. Okay, Rachel, go ahead.
David, on, on the lab comparison worksheet, under UC Davis, it says STR but can also offer SMP. Does that mean that they're going to move to the SMP protocol? Or does it mean that they have that testing already, they just don't typically use it? Do you know what that means?
Yeah. They're moving in that direction. Probably in the next couple of years, they'll have that. But they do not have that at this time. They offered a transition using the STR markers now and then transitioning over. And they would use the universal markers. So there's, right now, there's a, some universal markers that are being proposed. They haven't been accepted yet. And, you know, so once, if that happens, then they'll move over to that. But they're, they're, they currently have the 33 standardized markers for STR. And then they're moving towards SNAP testing in the future.
Okay, so, oh, in terms of a transition, if they use those universal markers, would they be able to use those to transition to SMP? Or would it be fairly painless? Or would that again be a painful transition?
There are two ways to go about it and kind of Neogen, you can, you know, the biggest thing with any of the changes, or all of it actually, is just getting those lines straight, the closely related lines that have problems now. Getting that straight is going to be the hard part. Regardless of whatever markers you use, getting those straight is important. And that probably means some retesting. After that, you know, if you believe that your DNA program is very sound, then transitioning from one to another, you shouldn't lose any accuracy. It should be accurate from that point on. The big trick is just to get the problem line straightened out so that you don't have like Labrador Aussie cross, called an Aussie.
Right. If Davis said that, you know, they'd offer 100 to 200, you know, to begin with for retest, would it be fair to say that that might cover? Oh, yeah. I think that that is an awesome recommendation on their part to say, yes, we'll test up to 200 dogs for no charge. So my other question is. Yeah.
They'd have to look at our population of dogs to determine the numbers and they'd have to look at our data as much as they could to figure out how many to actually, you know, they can work out the math for that to how to figure out what needs to be sampled. Any of the, you know, any of the companies in a transition are going to do some of that.
Right. Right. Because they have to confirm their database before they'll feel comfortable providing results to us. Am I thinking correctly here?
Yes. And with the, with the SNAP testing, one of the things that they'll be doing in addition to, they, they build something like, it's called a library, right? So it's a library of.
Right.
They use the basic concepts, you know, the basic SNAPS. But then the population of Aussies is unique. So they'll have some that they can determine through that as well. So they build up their own little library of that. And that, that can add in some benefits in the future.
And I also like the fact that with the SNAP testing, you can actually determine if it is an Australian shepherd versus a spaniel versus a lab versus a, a border collie or some other breed. Is that true?
Yes. Yes, they've done some testing. I looked at a couple papers. One of them was a differentiation between boxers, beagles, Aussies, and border collies. And they were able to determine, they were able to differentiate all of those breeds from each other. And the other nice thing about the SNAP testing is you can do your genetic testing at the same time. So you can determine parentage, but you can also do your panel testing at the same time. And, you know, in the future, ASCA could be a one-stop place where you do everything at once and ASCA might be able to make a little bit of money off it.
Right, I was going to, that was my next statement is then that might be a source of revenue because right now people are paying other companies to get that genetic testing done on their Australian shepherds.
Yeah.
But at some point, we may be able to move towards that. PPG, what worries me about PPG? And they're a great company and their customer service is awesome. But when I heard that they had, again, proprietary markers, is that worrisome to you, David?
It is at this point because it's the same situation that we're in. And it's the same situation with most of the, the current markers we have. Most of the current markers that we're using through the STRs, you know, each company has their own group. UC Davis is unique because theirs is more universal. But most of them develop their own in their proprietary. So, you know, a question for paw prints would be, you know, are you going to move towards universal markers if that becomes accepted?
Okay. Because right now, they offer the SNAP testing. But as you're saying, it's proprietary to their own private company.
Right. And they have 99 markers right now with potential for another 100. 99 is a bit low compared to what I was seeing in the papers. Most use 200 to 300.
I was, and I'd saw the same thing up to 300 in order to, to verify parentage. So back to, back to UC Davis then. If we were to go with them and they offer up to 300. if we were to go with them, and they offer, um, up to 33, did you say, on the STRs?
That's correct.
Would, would, in your, in your, um, educated opinion, would that be enough to determine parentage on the, uh, on the line bred, closely bred dogs that we've been having issues with? Because right now, um, if, if PPG is doing it, and they've done it in a couple of cases for us, um, they might have had to result up to several more SMP markers. Would you feel comfortable, um, with 33 being able to determine that parentage? Or do you even know?
From what I've been able to, no, from what I've been able to read, that, that's where it is right now. They've moved up to that many, yeah.
In order to determine trouble cases?
Yeah, some of the questions that were asked of, um, UC Davis was revolved around, are 33 enough for closely related? And UC Davis had, had said they had not had any problems using the 33.
Yeah, I, I did read that, but I wanted your opinion on it, based upon your, your knowledge of, of DNA and, and what you've looked at. So, that's all I have, and David, we thank you so very much for providing this analysis for us. This has been great of you to take your time to help us with this. Thank you.
Thank you, I enjoyed it.
Um, okay, next is Rick.
Uh, no, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, so now, just to make sure that nobody else has any questions or any comments, are there any additional questions for David, or any comments at this time?
Uh, Liz, this is Rachel.
Okay, go ahead, Jean.
Jean?
I, I was just going to raise my hand and get in the queue.
Well, you're on it.
Okay, um, I'm looking, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the lab comparison worksheet uh, that we got on May 23rd, and I'm looking at the number of markers used by each one of these labs. Um, first of all, what I'm seeing from PPG is that they have 99 SMP, 200 SMP if needed. UC Davis has 21 STR, more if needed, 200 SMP. Um, and of course, Neogen is way down at the 13 STR, 200 SMP. Um, so I, um, I guess I'm a little bit confused, uh, because it was my understanding, listening to this, that the SMP was the way to go, but it looks like PPG is the one that actually has those regularly used um, of the three that are new. Um,
So, I can answer.
Well, let me, let me finish, David, because I'm not quite finished.
Oh, okay.
And also, yeah, um, so, uh, it also says, even though I get that they're proprietary markers, and I think that we're going to find that pretty much regardless of where we go, um, it says the SMP will give to ASCA if needed, recommend, uh, switching. So, um, anyhow, I just, I just wanted to clarify that little thing. Um, I don't know if your data is newer than May 23rd, but that is what we have in our OneDrive. So, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so, the reason why, um, you see the analysis that I did, because I looked at all the information that was provided to me um, in all the analysis that was done by the different companies, and perhaps someone interviewed people later, but I pulled my data off what was provided by the genetics committee. So they didn't always match with what was listed in the summary table, and I couldn't find any data that showed anything different. So I went with, with what I could actually find, not what the summary was, because it didn't match. So I have no idea where the additional data came from, because it's not listed in any of the information that was provided.
Okay, well, I, I, it's my understanding that this comparison was done by the DNA committee, and, and maybe Kalen knows for a fact, but, uh, that was my understanding, and that this information came from the questionnaires that we actually sent to companies.
No, it's not in the questionnaires.
Yeah, I believe that, that table, I think Peter put it together, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks, Peter. And then I just have one other clarification I'd like to make. Um, as far as historical timelines are concerned, since my dog was one of the ones, I, I, I own a dog that's, uh, from Twin Oaks, um, that pedigree has changed based on DNA. Um, I just want to reiterate, because Linda gave a little bit of a timeline as to what happened with MGEN, and right after that, we also got a new office manager, which happened to be me. So, um, the Twin Oaks and Crown Point, um, DNA issues had nothing to do with Therion, had, had nothing to do with our switching over. Uh, the Twin Oaks issue was voluntary DNA, um, and a sire was excluded, and bodies were dug up, and, uh, DNA was, uh, extracted from teeth, and the correct parentage was identified. Um, that was done during the MGEN time, it had nothing to do with Therion. And the same with Crown Point. So I just wanted to make sure that our timelines are correct. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thanks, Jean.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, anybody else?
Liz, this is Rachel, I had one more thing. Um, to springboard off what Ken mentioned, uh, UC Davis is already working with Certigen. Um, Certigen, did they use STR or SMP testing, David, or do you know?
I don't know, it should be STR testing, I don't think they use the other.
Their, their STRs are in there, Peter?
Yes, uh, Certigen is currently using the same marker set as Therion, which is STRs, uh, but they also have the ability to utilize SMPs if needed, or if switching is, is necessary, so, um, it's, they're not a small lab, they're part of a much larger, uh, company that is based in the Netherlands, and, uh, they have no problem switching, or whatever you guys decide which company to go with to do, whether it's going to be STRs, or whether it's going to be SNAP, whatever.
So, Peter, then that brings about another question for you. Then if they can transition from one to the other, and even if we were to consider a, a US lab so that our members wouldn't have to ship and pay for shipping, if, if we were to possibly contract with UC Davis, and they already work with Certigen, couldn't we kind of get a partnership potentially going there that might serve ASCA until UC Davis, or up until the time they move over to the SMP testing? Do you think that might be a possibility?
Well, Rachel, I don't mean to sound biased in any way, form, or shape, because it's a German lab, and you know where I'm from. But, uh, Thomas assured me that regardless of what lab ASCA chooses for the future, they will be willing and able to work with them, regardless whether it's STR or SMP. Um, yes, it is correct that, uh, UC Davis is already working on other projects, uh, together with Certigen, or in a group with Certigen, whatever that is. I don't know, I have any details on that, but, um, they said regardless, um, they would like to continue working for the European members, uh, and their dogs, and, uh, from that standpoint, it doesn't really matter which lab the board finally chooses, they would be willing to work with, uh, any one of them.
All right, thank you so much, Peter, we appreciate your work on this.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for David? Okay. Thank you, David, so much for all your analysis, all the work you put into this. Uh, we thank you.
Oh, thank you much.
Okay.
I will head off now. Okay, good night, everyone.
Okay, good night, David. All right, now to Ray, you have anything to say, Ray?
Um, some of my questions, uh, were answered with Peter, as far as contact with Certigen, and what, what they're willing to work with. I saw that the UC Davis, uh, same thing that's been mentioned already or whatnot. Um, but my other concern is just the timeline here, uh, because we're starting to get very tight as far as any transitional information goes. Uh, because I didn't see any information from these other labs on what type of timeframe they typically take as far as transitioning over. Uh, so like, that's a, a big concern as far as my side of things, as well as our member's side, because as soon as the email went out about this phone call, uh, phone conference, I started getting calls and emails about that portion of the puzzle. Uh, obviously, Certigen is, is working with what we've currently utilized, and whether you're saying there's issues in the past or not, that is what we, our current DNA program is built on. Until something is clearly defined as far as universal markers, why not attempt to continue to work with what we've got as a base set before switching to the unknown? There is the big key. So, uh, I, I mean, those are my main points, uh, associated with this.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Um, I'm going to go around to see if any directors have any specific questions for Ray. Um, and I will start with Cindy.
Nothing that I can think of for Ray.
Denise?
Um, I don't think that I have anything right now for him, thank you.
Jean?
Uh, I, I don't have any questions, I appreciate his time, and, uh, thanks, Ray, for, uh, giving us your input, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Judy?
Um, just one small thing, a, a lot of our membership has complained about getting no reaction, or, uh, no interaction with Therion when they try to contact them. How difficult is it for you to get feedback, or to get return calls, emails, when you try to contact Therion on behalf of ASCA?
Um, I'm not going to lie, sometimes it can be difficult. Um, but twofold, if we are wanting that portion of the puzzle improved, then we as contract negotiators need to outline those areas that need improvement and get back in, in touch with them to see what they're, if they're willing to improve any of that por- portion of the puzzle. That, that's the whole purpose of, of contract negotiations. Similar situation as far as timeline of, uh, sample turnaround, because currently, it's written in that they're supposed to hold samples until they receive XYZ number of samples before they run a plate, which can, at some times of the year, increase the wait time of that plate processing. So, in negotiation, we could knock that, that number of samples down, that way the, the, the timeframe is cut down. Uh, I mean, those, those are questions that need to be asked to get a response. Even if they, they say, "No, we can't improve customer service," okay, at least we know that, though. We know what label we're standing on.
To Ray.
Is that it, Judy?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, all right, Kim?
Yes, Ray, I wanted to, I wanted you to explain to me, I was rather shocked to see your comment, you thought that somehow we could salvage a relationship with Therion, and that you were proposing that we stay with them. Um, from my perspective, and I know that my perspective is far different than yours, I was evaluating what I was seeing as being very difficult for you, and part of this process for me was to try and make your life as the office manager easier, so I was very shocked to see that you were supporting Therion. I just think that negotiations require two people. And when you have a company that you've contracted with, and they do not respond to you for greater than six months, and they can't pick up the phone and deal with an issue that they say that they could do, but now we have rules and they can't deal with it, and they just let it linger for over a year, I, I'm afraid, I, they've lost my confidence. I, I cannot negotiate or subject the membership to a company that's unwilling to dedicate themselves to the service of, of ASCA, when that is what we've asked them, and that's what our contract was. I think that in dealing with Therion, we are dealing with the unknown there. We're getting, we're not getting science, we're getting guesswork. We're getting incomplete, inconsistent, inaccurate results. This is something that I do not think, as an administrator, I can accept for the membership. I would much rather go with UC Davis, who's clearly given us a path forward, and clearly are ready and able to step in and start giving us the results that we need and originally planned so many years ago. And that's how I view it. So, again, you said that you're used to working with them, but is there any way you can change my mind? What, what is it about Therion that you think is salvageable here?
Okay, um, my basis, uh, and, uh, I'm not a, uh, I'm not pushing for Therion. I'm pushing for our DNA program that we currently have. Once again, we have another lab that is currently running the same marker set, uh, in Certigen. If that's the feeling that, that, as far as what you're expressing, Ken, then we should be further along in, in choosing what lab we're going to be moving on to than what we currently are, no offense, but it, it, if there's no salvageable portion of the puzzle with Therion, then why are we still hung up on them? My portion is not for Therion specifically. My portion is for our DNA program specifically. Because Therion is not the only fish in the pond for that.
Yes, I, I, I think, and I agree with you, but again, from my perspective, I do believe that Therion has not provided what we needed.
And I'm not going to argue with you on that.
And that they seem to be, by their own volition, unwilling to provide what we need as a resource.
Then let's move on and not be hung up on them.
We are not hung up on them.
We're too much from this contract being o- over, yes, we're hung up on them. Otherwise, we would have already voted on another lab.
Let me give you my perspective on why I do not believe we're hung up on them. What I think is happening is, once we, we believe that we are going to be having a problem, Therion will be angry, and we'll be throwing a wrench into your work here. And we try, we gave this to the membership to advise us and find all of those things that could possibly serve us, and now we're trying to pick one. That does take time. And there's always a lot of resistance for change in ASCA, so these things take time. We are not hung up on Therion. We are hung up on trying to protect the membership from undue hassles, shock, discomfort, we're trying to find the clearest way forward instead of rushing into making a decision. I do believe Therion has already told us that they do not any longer want to be our lab. So now, we have to find the least painful, but So now we have to find the least painful, but yet the most efficient way forward for our DNA program as it was originally proposed. And that's what I think we're trying to do now. So, okay, I'm glad that you further explained that you weren't basically supporting them, but that you were wanting us to move forward faster. Okay. I get it. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Linda?
Pass. No points.
Rachel?
Uh, Ray, are you satisfied with results um, that are sometimes three to six months to a year for our members to be able to determine parentage to be able to register their puppies?
No.
Are you satisfied when we lose dogs out of our registry, which brings in uh, financial resources to ASCA because they have tired of trying to deal with our DNA program and have decided that AKC is an easier path? Are you happy about that?
No.
Okay. With that said then, um, I believe that Therion has given us their answer. I, I totally agree with everything Ken expressed. I believe that there's a clause in the Therion contract that says we have a year after we notify them to make changes to move forward. So unless, as Ken said, they allow their emotions to control their business, then we should have a year with Therion to be able to move those samples and gather the information we need from them. Now bear in mind that some of those samples have been in those refrigerators from years. We will not know when they ship them, if they're going to be good. But I believe that, that this board is doing due diligence to provide the membership with a lab that's not a faulty product. I've said this, you, I said it to the board. Our membership has been using a faulty product now for years and it's time to move on. Thank you, Ray, for your work.
Okay. Thanks, Rachel. Rick?
Yeah, I, I agree with it. Uh, we are not hung up on Therion. I believe the reason the board has taken their time and their due diligence on this is they want to do right by the membership. Uh, that is, that is my opinion. If you've looked at the comments that have come in on a very small scale, but if you look at the ten to one, the membership's ready to move away from Therion. Uh, I just think that's the, the information the board is needing to make a conscious decision. We sent a letter to Therion, I don't know how many months ago it's been. We never got a response for four to six months. I, I, and I may be wrong, but their comments in that return letter to us pretty much told us that they no longer wanted to be partners with ASCA. That letter was full of demands. We want you to do this. We want the board going up on this price. We need another freezer. We need another refrigerator. We need you to do this. That right there told me that they no longer want to do business with ASCA. So that is kind of the way I feel about it. Are we hung up on Therion? No, definitely not. Uh, we want to do right by the membership. That's all I got.
Uh, thank you, Rick. Um, I do have a question, Ray. Um, since, since you are, you know, the one who's holding the front lines here, um, and I thank you for that because I know it's hard. Um, um, did you foresee any way, um, with the markers that we have to solve these multi-sire litter problem? What do you think of doing?
As far as the 12 marker set, no, you can't do it with that. The 24 marker set that had been in place, uh, before Therion started having issues getting primers and, and things along those lines had solved those issues whenever they arrived. Now with the, these last ones, once again, undoubtedly their supplier was having issues, whatever it is. Uh, and, and they can't solve those problems for us currently. Uh, once again, I'm not an advocate for Therion. I'm not saying that, that they're the company that we need to move forward with. Uh, and, uh, some of y'all might've taken me saying hung up on them in the, in the wrong fashion. The reason why I say that is because of situations like what Jean had to explain that always get blamed on Therion that happened prior to even. That's what I mean by hung up. We, we can, uh, continue to bring them up rather than looking forward and talking about those steps. That, that's what I mean by hung up on the, the puzzle.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Ray. Um, I was just wondering about the multi-sire litter because it, it seems to me like, that, you know, that has been uh, a major, a major problem, especially in the last year and a half or so. Um, so anyway.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think that they can solve those problems for us currently.
Okay.
Liz, this is Rachel. We've heard from everybody on the board but you. Could you give us your perspective on this?
I knew somebody would ask. Um, my perspective is that, um, what I feel right now, I'm hung up here. I, I haven't quite made up my mind of which lab I'm like best. But I think we need to move on. And, uh, we need to make some, you know, if we, one reason why I wanted to, to do this is because um, we need to clarify if we have any more questions that we want to send these companies or any questions that we have for Therion, um, any issues at all. We have to identify them within the next few days, put them together and then contact whoever we need to contact to get the answers to those questions. So that we can then move forward, uh, to deciding, making a final decision. Because like Ray said, um, you know, soon enough, whether we, we decide, you know, what, whatever lab we decide, the fact is that we still have to deal with that transition period, whether it's one year or two years, whatever. Um, and, and I think that we will have to like, if we make a decision on a company, we will have to ask them what they, what decision period they will feel comfortable with. Um, and, and, and take it to, to Therion and work out this, this transition. And so we need to have some of these tools, some of these, some of this knowledge and, and, uh, you know, our negotiation tools, uh, with us before we start negotiating, you know, before September. Because September, you know, it, it's the time when we have to come up with something. So, so we're getting close. It seems like if not, like we still have two and a half months, but that's gonna go fast, fast, fast. So we really need to start making decisions. And then part of that is to hone in whatever other questions we may have with the, the companies or Therion. Um, and then hopefully, um, by the time July 10th comes, we'll have some motions on the work, because we have to move on with this. If we're gonna change, even if we're not, because if we buy any, I mean, it seems like the, the board is moving towards, uh, you know, getting, um, another company. So, uh, even then, we still have to do negotiations with Therion. So we have to move on. We have to move forward. So does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else has anything else, else for Ray? Okay. Thank you so much.
My, my server. Name my server.
All right. Uh, Peter, you have anything, anything you want to say to us?
Um, yes, I do. Matter of fact, um, I would like to, I would like to thank you first for, uh, having me on. Um, I know it was last minute, but nevertheless, I'm thankful for the opportunity. Um, I got a chance to briefly scan through what David wrote and, uh, it's, it's a great piece. Um, so, um, the only question I would have is why this wasn't communicated to the committee? I'm sure they, uh, would have liked to take a look at it. Uh, if it's okay with the board, I will forward it to the committee so they have that information too. Um, let me start out by, um, giving you a little background here on why we're, you guys have this call today. Um, we started privately first about two years ago, um, discussing the work product and the quality of the work product of Therion, um, amongst committee members, um, before we actually moved this onto the full committee. And then also came up with a, the question for the board to allow us to research a possible addition slash replacement of Therion. Um, that's what we're, what you guys are looking at right now. Um, to go back to a previous comment about the lab comparison worksheet, the data I put in there, I took those out of the questionnaires, uh, that were provided to us by the various companies. Um, so that's where that data is coming from. Um, we have not had any additional private or official talks with either of, uh, those companies um, to get more detailed information because we wanted to keep it at a high level to start with, um, before we go any deeper. Um, I would also like to, uh, maybe clear up a couple of misconceptions here. Um, one of the reasons that we started the discussion uh, about adding slash replacing, uh, a new lab to, or adding to a new lab to Therion was the number of zeros that we've been seeing in the various, uh, profiles. Um, Ray sent me an example, uh, a couple, uh, I think it was about a year ago, and in that particular, uh, profile alone, and I think you guys have seen that as well, um, I'm seeing two, four, six, six zeros in the offspring that was genotyped. And one marker, the 1.9A, is something that Therion was never able to reproduce for whatever reason. I don't know why that is. Um, but that was one of the big concerns that we see, saw so many zeros in profiles. Um, just as a educational piece, Certigen has, from the beginning, used the same marker set as Therion and they have never had a problem, uh, Imgen, no, Certigen has never had a problem, uh, to reproduce and work that marker 1.9A. So just as a, as a factual information for you guys. Um, the other thing is that everybody seems to be hung up on the September 1st date that's in the memorandum of understanding. Um, I talked to Chuck about it and it was my understanding that this contract can be, if you want to call it a contract, because legally it's not, um, but you can basically cancel this understanding between ASCA and Therion at any time with one year notice. So you could theoretically write Therion a letter tomorrow and say, as of July 1st, we hereby, uh, ending our relationship, uh, by, uh, June 30th, 2020. So September 1st is not written in stone. You can cancel that understanding anytime with one year notice. And you can verify that with Chuck. I got it from him directly because that's the way I read the, the memorandum. Um, the other thing is, um, I agree that we're not hung up on Therion because if we were hung up on Therion, then all of you wouldn't be having this discussion. Um, the question is how to move forward from here on out and move out in a matter of that impact to the membership at li- as little as possible. Transitions are always painful. We all know that. And this will be no different. Um, when it comes to the transition period that Ray mentioned earlier in his comments, um, I don't see that problem because basically we have a 12-month transition period in, during which the new lab, uh, will be able to get set up, start working on profiles, stuff like that nature. Is there negotiating to do on specific details? Definitely. But, um, there is a 12-month period that we can work with, which is a good thing because we're not in a position that we were with, uh, when Imgen basically, uh, quit on us from one day to the other and all of a sudden somebody else has to jump in. So, uh, I think that can be less of a concern. Um, everything else is, uh, considering Therion to be working with us in the future is just, uh, kicking the can down the road and is not helpful at all. So from that perspective, um, I think the best move that ASCA can make is, uh, to make a decision on, uh, replacing Therion with a different lab. Um, regardless which one of the three that the committee has put forth, uh, it's gonna be, Certigen, as I said before, will be able to work with either one of them regardless of the technique, whether it's STR or SMPs. So, um, I guess that's what I have to say.
Okay. I'm gonna start going around to see if anybody has any questions for Peter about the, about anything that the DNA committee, uh, did or any of the data they gathered. And I'll start with Cindy.
Um, Peter, I only have one question that I need, um, some clarification on. Um, if a lab is doing the STR uh, and you have the mar- the STR markers, um, the other parent you're testing with the SMP, can they be cross-referenced?
No. It's two different techniques, uh, that are being used with STR and SMP. So, um, you can only, it's basically comparing apples to oranges. Uh, you cannot, uh, correlate those two techniques with each other. So if one parent is STR tested, the other SMP, then one of them needs to be, uh, tested again, either STR or SMP to make it work.
Okay. That's what I thought. So if the STRs, um, testing will not provide enough information for a closely bred litter, we would have to retest, um, using the SMPs? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. Um, I talked to Thomas at great length about multi-sire litters and they're not as common in Europe as they are here in the US. So, uh, he said he had maybe a handful over the years and, uh, they were able to pull it off and find the right sires and everything, um, with a limited number of, uh, STRs. Um, when I go with a, when I go with what David just told us, that right now UC Davis is using 33 markers and have no problems figuring out close-related dogs, then, um, I would think that a higher number of STRs will be able to determine parentage on close-related dogs. So the 15 markers that we currently use, uh, in ASCA on, uh, multi-sire litters or close-related dogs, maybe they're enough? I don't know. That is a question that Therion needs to answer. Um, I don't know how many of those have come up over the past few years. Um, it was never a focus of the committee. Um, but, uh, I think the number of markers, the higher the number of markers is, whether STR or SMP, the greater the, uh, parentage results or the, the accuracy of the result will be. So, um, with that being said, if UC Davis says with 33 STRs- So um with that being said, if UC Davis says with 33 STRs, we can easily determine close-related dogs or multi-fired litters, then I would take them on their word because I think they're a reputable organization or a reputable entity. Um, same goes for uh companies like PPG or Neogen that does it with SMPs. Um, but like I said, those are two totally different techniques that are being used in either more or less a technical question that would need to be asked through the company.
Okay, so a company like Neogen that does the STR and the SNP testing, um you would have to have a commitment to the membership to either do one or the other, otherwise we could have problems, we we would have owners having to retest only because they didn't do the same um process, the STR or the SNP, correct?
Um, it is my understanding that we would have to go with one technique, either STR or SNP.
Okay.
So um you can't have both. Uh, it doesn't make any sense. Um, because then, like you said, you have, one dog is STR tested, the other is SNP tested and those two would never come together. So as a uh as as an organization, ASCA would have to decide STR or SNP. However, um they all, um I mean, PPG does only SMPs, Neogen and UC Davis do offer both. Um, what UC Davis does is they are using a public domain marker set by Isaac when it comes to STR and they're basically waiting for Isaac to come up with an SNP marker set that they would then switch to. So if we would start with either one, STR with Neogen or uh UC Davis, then we would need to negotiate that in in the event that an SNP marker set is becoming available, a public domain marker set is becoming available, that the transition is somehow worked out from STR to SNP and possible retesting of uh samples that are available at the at each company um to make that as seamless as possible for the membership. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense and what I'm looking, thinking is the SNP, if if we decide that's the way to go, then we have to wonder, is UC Davis offering it or or they do it, but are they offering it or are they waiting on it until they get a universal set? Or are they using their own set in the meantime?
Um, uh, that's another thing. If they're using their own set in the meantime, uh we would have the same issue, let's say two years down the road, when Isaac comes up with a uh public domain marker set to be used. So we would, they would have to do it all over again with the with the new marker set because you can't just take one SNP marker set and say, okay, now we're gonna uh correlate those over to the new marker set. That's not working. So basically with uh with UC Davis or Neogen for that matter, we would have to start out with an STR marker set and once a the public domain marker set for SMPs is determined by Isaac, then we would switch over to SNP.
Now, just to interject uh with a question real quick, Peter. Um, but those STR markers that they have are different from the ones ASCA is using right now, right?
Yes, they are. Uh, neither one of those companies uh is either willing or able to set up the same marker set that we are currently using. It's simply not feasible for them.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it wouldn't be cost-effective. Um, but i- if we choose any of them and and we say, you know, start with STRs and then switch eventually, then we end up switching twice, right?
Say that again, please.
So if, say we pick UC Davis and we use their the STR markers that they're using now and later on, two years from now, they switch to S to uh SMPs, so we in fact will be switching twice.
Uh, right. That's that's absolutely correct. So here's the thing, um whichever company you guys choose, um there will be some transition in the beginning because of a different marker set, regardless whether it's SNP or STR. So there is the the transitional pain that we are talking about and that pops up in every every other comment. Um, when it comes to the switching of STR to SNP, my understanding is that that is more of an internal matter within the lab itself. It's not something that the customer, meaning the ASCA member, will necessarily have to deal with because at some point, if SNP marker set is available, they will start new samples on the SNP marker set and will then take the STR marker set and retest it on the SNP for the parent, for example, to make it work and get a result. So it's it's not necessarily something that the the ASCA member will ever have to deal with. They just send in their sample, whatever technique that will be used, let's say, two, three years down the road from today, uh is not something that the the ASCA member will have to concern themselves with.
So just, so you're saying that uh the the membership will only have to, you know, uh send one sample, let's say, uh to switch to the STR and then the company, whichever it is, would uh keep part of that sample for retesting later when the the SMPs become the marker set? Is that what you're saying?
That is my, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry, guys. Do you have anything else?
I have one more question for Peter.
Uh.
Um, Peter, if, what is the shelf life for um, if they're using brushes, um are they drawing enough? No, worded wrong. If they're using brushes and swabs, what is their storage, just how do they store so they can switch from STR to S SMPs?
What they're actually storing is not the physical brush. What they're storing is the the DNA that they extract from the sample. So it's not like they have a whole freezer full of brushes sitting somewhere in the back. Um, it's just the DNA that they're extracting from that brush sample. So uh if it's frozen uh correctly and everything goes according to plan, then we're looking at 10, 15, 20, 25 years that they can store it um without having any degeneration or anything in it. Um, unless you have something happening like at that fertility clinic in Ohio a few months ago where the whole system broke down and uh a whole lot of samples uh went down the drain, literally. Um, but other than that, um I, that is not something that I worry about at this point, um especially with um the big companies, but and again, this hospital probably was a was a well-known fertility clinic as well. Um, but it shouldn't have happened, but then again, um there is no, I thi- I guess what I'm trying to say is there is no 100% certainty that something will go haywire, but uh I would not start out the whole process with anticipating, well, what if their system goes down and we lose uh we lose uh any samples?
No, yeah, I was, I more wanted to get an answer on the shelf life of the um of the DNA sample to be able to switch from one to the other. So you say 10 to 20 years.
UC UC Davis offers uh 10 years of storage uh right off off the gate. So if you or if ASCA decides, we want to have uh those samples stored longer than that, then that is something that would have to come up in within the negotiations with uh the company, with UC Davis, uh and see what they have to say. Uh, I mean, they may offer uh longer storage for an extra fee or something, I don't know, but 10 years is what they offered right off the bat.
So Peter, what they're doing actually is that they're taking the brush, they isolate the DNAs and say, they they isolate 100 micrograms of DNA and they use, let's say, uh 40 micrograms to run their STR, they still have 60 left in that cube that they will go ahead and store for us, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we just have to, I think, I think we just have to establish exactly how is it that they're storing the DNA. Um, there are ways to store it. A lot of people uh store it at minus 80, others prefer using liquid nitrogen. Um, but I guess we will have to find that out. Um, okay.
Hey, hey Liz, this is Rachel. I don't mean to interrupt y'all, but if you go back and you read on the questionnaires that went out to each lab, they clearly define, like for example, UC Davis, we currently store all samples indefinitely, but obviously there's a limit and this will be 10 years for dogs. Our contract states that we will notify you before disposing of any samples and give the option for you to make arrangements to transfer the samples. And they go on to say that, um, and the question we ask was, will you be able to accommodate reuse of samples at a later date for different tests? And they said, yes, part of the reason we keep samples is to allow retesting, to verify parentage later and also to add new tests as they become available or desired. We collect three swabs from each dog to allow for this. Two swabs are tested in parallel as part of their QT, quality control, the isolated DNA, and the third swab are stored. And I'm just reading this from UC Davis. On each one of these, we ask the same question. So Cindy, you can go back and read these and it absolutely defines for you how they're going to do it.
Okay.
Cool. Thanks, Rachel.
I was looking for it on the worksheet and I didn't see it there. Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, Denise?
No, I have to say that I I am so impressed with the way this whole scenario is happening that there's so much knowledge about the DNA program and how things are done because I'm just a total novice at this myself, but I can see how um the advantages are with the company that's work really to work with us and work with another lab and to move forward with this. And um in the comparison of the questions on the um one drive, that that is awesome to be able to compare apples to apples on each one. Some of them don't answer the questions quite as completely or or straightforwardly as another, but um I I really do think that moving on is a great idea and it was a nice, it was good that Peter brought that up about the contract, not having to wait till September. It's only a couple of months away, but it's still a couple of months in our favor if that's what we choose to do. And um I just appreciate all of the work that everybody's put in on this and the knowledge that that they've shared today. Thank you.
All right, I had it on mute. No, I'm I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Judy?
There's just one thing that's been bothering me and it doesn't have to do with the actual DNA or any of that. I mean, I'm not qualified to comment on that one way or the other, but um something that Ray said about customer service, that, you know, we should be talking to Terion and negotiating it. Very sorry, but to me, as a business owner, customer service is not negotiable. You either give it or you don't and we haven't had it from Terion. We have somebody who isn't, and for the record, I've had no problem with Terion whatsoever. All of my DNA has come back relatively quickly with no problems, but when you can't get a hold of a vendor for months at a time, that either tells me they no longer want to work with us or for some reason they are unable. Either way, we need to make a new decision and find someone who will work with us. That's not a negotiating point. Um, customer service is not negotiable. That's all.
Thanks, Judy. Ken?
No, I think I'm good. I think we just uh we pretty much talked it through. Thank you, Peter.
Liz, if I may?
Yes, yes, Peter.
Um, just something because Ken brought it up uh when he asked Ray um in terms of, uh David, I'm sorry, uh in terms of uh Certogen and uh sending samples over and stuff. Uh, it's a funny thing he brought that up because um when, in the very beginning, uh I was talking to Thomas and uh he was kind of in his head just during a phone call laying out a plan on how something like this could work, meaning sending samples over to Germany. It uh ended up being not that individuals would send their samples to Germany directly, but that they would be collected uh here in the States and then send over to to Germany in like a complete package of, I don't know how many samples in one week would would come in, um and then would would be uh worked on. So um it is something that Certogen uh or Thomas was thinking about already uh in the very beginning and we never pursued it further because it became pretty obvious through discussion on the committee uh that that would not be an option for people to send their stuff over to to Germany to be tested, although that was not the 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 plan at all, but I didn't communicate that plan because it didn't go anywhere and it was more of a uh sort of a game plan, so to speak, uh when it comes to that. But since Ken brought it up, um there there is actually something that was thought about, but I don't know if that is something that you guys want to pursue in getting in touch with with Certogen uh or not, but it would be an option if you choose to do so um for the time until a uh Isaac SNP marker set has been developed. So since you that brought it up earlier, maybe we should ask Certogen. Um, I'm sure they're open to the questions that you guys may or may not have. So just want to throw that in there uh for good measure. Thank you.
Liz, this is Ken.
Yes, sir.
I uh I was going to pursue that because to me it makes sense, especially if we end up having trouble, um we don't have Terion's cooperation for doing a transition. We already have Certogen with our database doing our testing. Um, there wouldn't be much change. I think it it just might probably end up uh delaying the results that we get. I'm not quite sure. I, what we have to do is find out, is this something that would ease the transition and would it help the members in the transition? Um, I think Certogen's already our lab, they're already using our markers, they're already with our database. So there, I I'm not quite sure why we didn't address that issue. I thought we had, but then I I just totally lost, got lost on the radar. So um I would like us to see if we could talk to the person who is the director of Certogen and see if there's some way that we could develop a transition process to a new lab and not make such a drastic change right off the bat. So, thank you, Peter. I I was going to pursue that, I just didn't know when, so.
Yeah, uh like I said before, I think that after this meeting is over, I'd say, you know, in the next week, we should um, you know, sit down and come up with whatever questions we have, either to Certogen or whoever, or Terion or whoever, and just go ahead and and put them all together uh and then send them out so that we can get our answers. all together and then send them out so that we can get our answers as quickly as possible and we can go ahead with whatever decision we make. So I think that, that probably is the best way to go. But anyway, any other questions? I'm going to continue going around if there are any questions for, for Peter or any other comments. And Linda is next.
How about the stored semen from the past? Where does that go?
You mean the frozen ones?
Yep.
What do you think about that, Peter?
I, I don't understand the question. You mean how they store it or will they store it? Is that what you're asking?
No, I think what's asked is how, how would, you know, another lab deal with, you know, deceased dogs, right? And we have frozen semen or whatever. And to some people, you know, the frozen semen is rather precious, so.
Well, I guess that is something that would need to be discussed with, with the lab that you guys choose or intend to choose. We didn't ask that question in particular because it was, it's mostly that people store their semen in other places, not necessarily with Theryon. So from that perspective, I think it is something that we would need to discuss with, or would need to be, would need to be discussed with the lab that you're leaning towards on how they would, how they would treat that. We only specifically asked in the questionnaire about what kind of, of samples do you accept? What kind of, or how, how do you, you know, what am I trying, what am I trying? I gotta, I gotta brain fart. What, what kind of sample collectors do you use or do you accept? So that was our main, main focus. I would think that all the labs regardless will accept semen as a sample as, as since it offers DNA. So I guess they would store it the same way, they would store the same, the DNA the same way that they store DNA out of E D J blood or from the blood cards or the brushes or whatever. So because bottom line, they extract the DNA from the sample and that is what they store. So unless you expect them to store the semen and act as a semen bank, which I don't think you do, because there are other companies that do that for a living, but I think that's, that's how it would be done. Does that answer your question?
Linda? Did we lose Linda? I think it's probably one of the questions that we should, okay?
Well, never mind. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Linda?
It's about the stored semen that's there and there isn't enough to go forward with? It's like a do or die? What do you do with those?
I don't understand the question, Linda. What are you asking? If they only have like one straw that they want to use, but there is not enough to determine from a deceased dog?
Right.
Honestly, I cannot answer that question. I don't know, period. I mean, I, I'm, I'm the first one to admit that I know what I don't know and that is something I don't know because if you have only one straw left then, and you want to use that for breeding, and this is from a deceased sire that, that you had in the past, who was not DN8 for whatever reason, maybe because it was before, way before the DNA program.
He's DNACP.
Well.
DNACP is born in 1997.
Okay, so he's in the database?
Yep.
Yeah, well, then I don't see, I don't see the issue because if I breed a DNACP dog to another DNACP dog, the offspring will be depleted. So I guess I don't understand the, the issue at hand.
Well, me either.
I, I think that what, I think that what Linda is trying to say, let's say that I have a dog that, that died in 1998 and I have this precious straw left and I want to use it. Yes, the dog is CP, but then, you know, he is, he was done with the STR markers and eventually, you know, if we switch that, that those, that information is not longer, cannot longer be used to DNA this progeny.
Okay, okay. Now, now it gets clearer. Yes, now I understand what you're saying. And still, I don't have an answer for that because if, I mean, no, I don't have an answer for that. I'm sorry.
I, I guess the, the thing that we can do to at least try to address, you know, this question is to send the question to, to whatever companies and ask how much they would need because, you know, it may be that, you know, they only need, you know, the little wash from the, from the tube after the AI is done. I don't know. I'm not sure because I, I, I done DNA with many, many different tissues, but never with semen. So I have no idea.
If I remember correctly from a conversation I had with Thomas a few weeks ago, we were talking about that issue when it comes to literally the last straw and having to DNA that with possibly, either way, STR or SMP, whatever process is being used. I think he mentioned something that if you have that straw, the, whatever is left in that, in that particular straw can be used for DNA parentage verification. But I would have to go back to him and ask him again about it. I'm not 100% certain, but I think that was what he said. So there is a chance, but then again, it would probably be best to talk to the labs that you're leaning towards and ask them that particular question and get a direct answer from them on what they can or cannot do.
Peter, this is Denise. I, I think that you're right on that. I did read something this morning about the fact that if you use a straw, that what's left in the straw after the, after the breeding is enough to gain a DNA sample from.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, that is, you know, what we call the wash from the, from, from the straw that's left. And we can put that in a tube.
Yeah, this is Rachel. I read the same thing, guys.
Yeah, so they don't take it from the straw initially. They breed the dog, then wash the straw and there's enough there that you can get it. So Linda, you don't lose your straw.
What, what about if they start and tell us?
Well, I, I don't know when, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to really get the answers from them rather than us trying to answer because like I said, I've worked with many other tissues, but never seen them. So I, I, I don't want to guess. We will have to.
I would, I would post that question to the lab that you're leaning towards and gain more information from and ask them if they, for that particular problem, have a special, specific, a specific process in place. If it's the last straw, then how should I as a breeder treat it to get that dog DNA and make sure that you guys can extract DNA from that particular remains that are left? That is something that the lab should be able to answer.
Anything else, Linda?
No.
Okay. Thanks. Rachel?
Well, again, going back to what Ken, the conversation that Ken started and we're now kind of fleshing out was if we chose to go, for example, with a US-based company, which is UC Davis, which also is in partnership with Certagen already, and we start out with the STRs, it, it clearly said in, in their comments and in their response to our questions that, that it would be available for later testing. And so if we, if we chose to go with them and they could partner with Certagen so that we could absolutely, you know, just transition with as least pain as possible, that might be a solution. But we definitely need to reach out to Certagen to determine, you know, what their transition period might be and, and what their business model might look like. So thank you, Peter, for your help on this.
You're welcome. No problem.
Thanks, Rachel. Rick?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a minute to thank Peter and his committee. These guys have put in a lot of hours and a lot of work getting the information that we requested. There was some really good discussion. Sometimes they were a little bit heated discussions, but they worked as a team and to come to a common goal and that's to provide us three quality labs to choose from to move forward. So Peter, thank you. Please thank your committee for me. Job well done.
I will let them know. Thank you very much.
Last call. Any other comments or questions for Peter? Look, like we're in the clear, Peter. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're more than welcome.
Like Rick said, please forward our thanks to the DNA committee. They, they really put a lot of hours and I don't know where, which company we will choose, but no matter what, it'll be partly because of their efforts. So thank you.
I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. Okay, so now I, I guess we need to, it looks like the board is moving towards getting away from Theryon and choosing another company. So can we agree on the next week for all of us to think about questions that we have to, you know, that could be crucial to ask of any company or Theryon to make any further decisions before we have to write some motions of either way? Can we agree on that?
Liz, it's Cindy. I've already got one question. I looked back on one of the questionnaires and like PPG said that they, when we asked how long they store the samples and what the cost for the storage is, they said the extracted DNA is stored indefinitely and there's no additional cost to Aska, but I don't see where we asked how it was going to be stored. So that would be a question I'd add.
Okay. So yeah, let's, let's go ahead and, and put these questions. I, I guess the thing that we could do is actually send them to Calla. And Calla, could you please put them together for us and then once that week is, has passed, send it, send us the whole document so that we can then work on sending them to the companies. Would that be agreeable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Liz, this is Jean. It, it is agreeable, but I think for what it's worth, we need to prioritize what is important to us, what is important to Aska with these labs. So that, you know, not all the questions, while they all might be worthy, are not weighted equally, you know, just as we did like our, with our rubric for, you know, our past things that we've done. I mean, we can all think of probably a million different questions, but how many are going to be, you know, what, what are the most important ones, I guess, or not maybe the most important ones, but the ones that are going to have bigger weight, you know, is, is customer service more important than proprietary markers? Is storage more important than, you know, the ability to, you know, et cetera, you know what I'm saying?
So what you suggest is come up with a rubric, which, you know.
Well, you know, or, or at least say, these are, these are the common things that we think that we can agree on that are probably most important as far as a DNA program is concerned. You know, obviously accuracy is going to be number, I, I would assume would be number one. You know, customer service is going to rate right up there. Cost is going to rate right up there. And so maybe we can, you know, if we can jot that down quickly in the next couple of days and all kind of go, yeah, this is what we're looking for. And then in addition, you know, have our questions, then we can weigh the questions appropriately.
Sure. I think, I think that's a good idea. So is everyone agreeable? Say today's Tuesday, well, almost Wednesday right now. So can we agree on, I don't know, sometime this, this weekend sometime or Monday to have the questions and then maybe by Friday to have what those priorities would be, what we feel, each one of us feels is most important to us in.
I could agree to that.
Yep. Monday.
Yeah. So, okay, so questions and, and at the latest by Monday and then as, you know, the priorities if possible by Friday, but if we have to wait till Monday, then we have to, but probably Friday would be better for that. I think that, that's a good plan. Anything else, guys?
Lizette, this is Peter. One thing, one more time. Is it okay for me to forward that report from David to the committee? I just wanted to double check.
Does anybody have an objection?
No, I think it'd be great.
I agree with Jared.
I have concerns about the historical aspects of it because I, I, I believe there are errors in it. I don't think the historical stuff is necessarily important to Aska as far as going forward is concerned.
So you're okay with sending them the actual analysis of the labs, but not necessarily the history?
Correct.
Okay.
So you want me to, to take out the, the pages that refer to the past, so to speak, but I can send the rest about the, the three labs that are before you. We don't have any problems?
That's what it sounds like.
Peter, this is for Jean. That, for me, that works unless you want, unless you want the rebuttal that was written three years ago.
You know, it's, to be honest with you, Jean, that's all stuff that's in the past and we need to focus on the future and Aska needs to focus on the future. So from that perspective.
I totally agree.
I'm good with just sending them the part that speaks to the, the current labs that are in contention here and leave the historical part out of it. I don't have a problem with that. So most of them probably don't even know what was going on 15 years ago anyway.
I, I totally agree. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Anything else before we say bye? Okay, I think that we have a plan for members who will eventually get to listen to this. Thank you for your concern and your attention to listen to all. Thank you to directors, to David, Ray and Peter for their help. And I think we can adjourn.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.